Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. We officially welcome all of you to this regularly scheduled city council meeting. Especially acknowledge the presence of three of our city council members. Grateful to you for being here as well. So with that, we'll officially call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This, the ninth of March of 2017. We invite our city clerk to conduct our roll call.
Andy Wilson?
Present.
Jason Daley?
Here.
Joe Schei?
Present.
Mike Parsons is asked to be excused.
Yes, he has.
And Mayor Schei?
Also present. With that, we do have a quorum, so we can officially proceed. We'll do so by voting all present to please raise for our pledge of allegiance. Jason, will you do it first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll proceed with the mayor's report. I have a number of memos and emails that I think ought to bring to your attention. There have been over two council meetings that I have not been present. I have, however, been following the proceedings carefully. So, but I'd like to, as a matter of information, inform our council members that we've received notice of an opening of the 2017 Association of Washington Cities Board of Directors. And there is an opening, I believe, on District Number Five, which includes the city of Vader. And there are about twenty-six other communities in that district. And each of us are invited to see if there might be somebody on the council or an elected official who would want to be nominated for that opening. So I call that to your attention. And if you are, feel free to contact our city clerk, and we'll forward your name for voting consideration. I wanted to inform everybody that Roger Neal, our Risk Management Services Agency Program Manager, our city insurance, is retiring. Roger has been a significant supportive influence in our community, and he's an outstanding employee in our MSA. He'll be missed. But he's having a retirement gathering on March twentieth from three to five PM at the AWC office at 1076 Franklin Street in Olympia. Again, that's March twentieth, three to five PM. If you want more information, it will be with our city clerk. We also need to give careful consideration to sending a representative from our community to the Washington State Transportation Commission meeting, which will be held in Centralia on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth. And it's valuable to have a representative there. In the past, council member Kevin Flynn had attended that, but he's obviously no longer available for that. And I would invite any of you who may have the time and the inclination to find out more about that and participate.
What is that again?
It's the Centralia Washington State Transportation Commission. They have regular meetings. They talk about the effects and development of statewide transportation policies, plans, and investment. So you become part of the input and potential decision-making process. But with more details in that flyer. There is also a meeting scheduled for the Southwest Washington Regional Transportation Planning Organization at the Veterans Memorial Museum. This one's ways out on May tenth, 2017. It's a Wednesday. But...
That's the one that Kevin used to go to.
Oh, not the previous one?
Not the previous one.
All right. Well, thank you for that clarification. That's right. This was normally held in Cowalitz County.
Cowalitz County.
Right. But on this occasion, it's going to be held at the Veterans Memorial Museum. So we have more info on that. As if that was not enough, the Lewis County Transportation Strategy Council, the TSC, needs a mayor from a city west of I-5 to serve on the governing board of this committee. And that group would be from Napvile, PL, Vader, and Winlock. I've served on that, the TSC, on two previous occasions. The last mayor was Lonny Dowell from Winlock. And so it does note that it could be the mayor or alternate mayor of one city east of I-5.
West, west.
Mayor Pro-Ten. Yeah. That's what I said.
You said east.
Well, it's got to be west. Yeah, there is one from the east, small cities, and one from the west. So this is a function that could have a significant influence on the allocation of transportation funding strategies. Although, in the interest of time, I won't get into specifics, but would be happy to talk to anyone individually after the meeting. Generally speaking, what's decided is where the county is going to spend their money throughout Lewis County. And it's seldom, if ever, that the cities get to dip from that pot. But sometimes, if you have a voice and you squeak loud enough, you might get a little green. But meetings take place third Mondays of the month from two to three PM during the day. The last thing is that I wanted to call to your attention the newspaper article that came out in the town prior yesterday. And it was written by Sarah Elms, and she announces that there is an emerging movement in the community. It's not city-sponsored, city administration, elected officials sponsored, but it's individuals who are interested in mirroring the vision Toledo that has been going on for a number of years and seeing if there might be interest to carry out a similar activity in the city of Vader. And if there were sufficient interest, they are considering to amalgamate the Vader Citizens League and the Vader Community or Vader Citizens Community Improvement, VCCI organization. And plans are being held to hold a big meeting like Toledo has done on April twenty-second of this year at the Assembly of God Church in their cultural center. And I think it'll be, I'm not sure of the time, but I think it'll probably be about ten, or ten-thirty or so. But I'm just interested and intrigued and excited about this emerging possibility and hope that if it does occur, we can get, like they did, two hundred people out to their inaugural big meeting. And then an energy might emerge to help build some bridges in this community and maybe overcome some of the divisions that we've experienced over the years. So I would make that as a matter of public record and would invite all present to write that date down. And I think there'll be more information forthcoming. So there, I think that we've already talked about item one. So that concludes the lengthy mayor's report. So with that, do we have any reports from the council? Okay. There are none. Let's proceed with the official approval of tonight's agenda.
I would make a motion that we approve the agenda for three, nine, twenty-seventeen for the city council meeting agenda.
Okay. Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. Second, Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Let's proceed now with the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the meeting on two, twenty-three, two thousand seventeen.
I second.
Okay. Now, you've heard the motion submitted by the council or by Mr. Daley to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Can we hear a second from Mr. Wilson? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Voucher approvals?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first of March, two thousand seventeen in the amount of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the voucher expenditures from the first of March in the amount noted. Do we have a second?
I second.
Submitted by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We now have our special reports. I see we have Sergeant Cheeseman with us. I note that we have Lewis County Sheriff's Department report this evening.
I just noticed that an error on your deal too, so if you have that on the stats that I gave for November. February is pretty quiet. There's three hundred and twenty-four contacts, two calls on shift, and then, but it should be a total of seven calls. And one, the one criminal call for the year was at the park, the Plexiglas deal on one of the ordeals.
Yeah, two before.
So, and that's the first crime that you've had for the year too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's a malicious, heinous crime.
Yes, yeah. Seventeen traffic stops, one infraction issued, and one criminal traffic arrest made, so. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet.
Okay. Now, I heard that there was a fire.
Yes.
I was out of the city.
Tuesday.
On Tuesday?
Yes.
There is a GoFundMe account for that family also.
Yeah.
Gosh, I don't know the name of the family either, but...
Is it Dro?
Is it Dro?
Granitos? Is it Dro or is it Dro Granitos?
Is it Dro. What's the last name?
It's either Granitos. I don't know which one is the first and which one is the last name.
Is it Dro as the first name?
Okay, is it Dro as the first name? Okay, then Granitos, I believe, is the last name.
Yeah, we got, Red Cross came out their way too. We got them out right away that day too.
Okay. Well, and so you sent representatives there?
Yes, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you.
And that's going to be your first investigation under your contract here.
Except for it will be.
It is.
It didn't want that. Okay, so...
Yeah, yeah.
He called her.
All right. Well, we'll stay tuned for that. Okay. With that, we're ready for public comment.
We have a comment from the public. We can take one at this time?
We don't have anyone on the list.
Okay. We have enthusiastic...
Oh, so enthusiastic. Could Jason finish that GoFundMe page? What was that now?
I had asked if there was like some kind of a place where people can donate to that family, and there is a GoFundMe page on the internet.
Under the name?
You might be able to look up Fire Invader, and it might take you there.
Oh, okay. That was my question.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, man can add some comment?
Yeah, please.
I got an email today from the folks in our fiscal department to do our building collection for Vader Water System. And they have put a countywide email out to, with shoe sizes and clothing sizes of family and things like that. So the county is working on collecting clothes, and obviously, we'd be interested in sending out information about GoFundMe pages and things like that if you want to forward that to me or to the folks in our billing department. We happen to get that out to county staff. It's not countywide, people, but county staff. We got a lot of people that like to help out with those kinds of things, so we'd be willing to contribute if possible.
Did they get to stay local?
Well, I heard that they are.
When the Red Cross took them, did they get to stay local?
I don't know. I don't know.
Mayor's hotel from here was like Casa Rock.
I think for the first night, they stayed with some neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, all I heard was the Red Cross had extended assistance, and historically, it's going to be within proximity, as close as they can.
Right.
So this is very close.
No one got injured. That was my...
Yeah, nobody injured.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Okay, well, thank you very much, Eric, for that. Jill, would we make sure we get contact with it? So no other public comment, all right? With that, I think we're ready to proceed with our official agenda items. Item number one is, yeah, council is ready to consider the vacancy on council. And I can inform the present members that Mike Parsons is interested in participating in this and is standing by for a phone call. And so I think we should go ahead and establish contact with him during this particular agenda.
I think we determined last time with the attorney that we need to pass a motion for him to be involved.
Okay, that sounds good.
Someone close to him.
Yeah. We should get a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Parsons be allowed to call in for the meeting.
Okay. Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Schei to reach out to Mike Parsons and to participate telephonically in this agenda item. Do we have a second for that? There are no second, we can't proceed with that motion. So the, however, I'm not entirely sure that it's legally required to have a motion for that activity if the council member has indicated interest in participating in this. I don't think his physical absence precludes his ability to participate in that. Could be wrong, but in my ten years of experience, it's been done before, so...
I think we have a quorum. I still think it's necessary.
Well, if he has expressed...
If he wants to wait.
...an interest, well, sure. He did indicate to me that if there was a problem, if there wasn't consensus, then he was willing to wait until he's back during next council meeting. So that's an option to consider as well. But I would be reluctant since my responsibility is to moderate the meetings and be sensitive to the need for motions. If we had a sitting duly-elected council member who's indicated that he's ready and able to participate, it might be a breach of, maybe not ethics, but propriety to prevent him from participating. So if we have it, did you want to modify your motion or reconsider a course of action?
I would, if Mike is interested in calling in, I don't have a problem with it. We've had people call in before.
Right. Yeah, it's, the only question is, is a motion required? And my experience with Robert's Rules of Order, if, you know, it's procedurally preferred, but I can't sit here and say that it's required. If there was an intention on the council, whatever the motivation would be to not provide a second for that motion, and that happens too. But if there's no second, then you preclude his participation, it could create some procedural challenge to the action. So let's see.
Did we want to wait until Mike is back then in person?
I think so. I'd rather be back than to, I'd like to talk to him face-to-face.
How are we doing on time for this nomination? Are we still waiting?
Yeah, nine days.
Right.
Nine days, and I think it was like the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh of January when she tendered her notice, so.
Okay. We'll make sure we're sensitive to that. That seems...
Yeah. I don't think we're even a month in yet, so.
I fully anticipated that we wouldn't engage in it, to be honest with you. So, but when he indicated that he wanted to and was determined to, then that was just twenty minutes before the meeting. So I had no problems postponing it. And he indicated to me earlier that he had no problems with that either. But then he figured he wanted to.
Well, then I will withdraw my motion then.
Okay. So we have a motion to table this agenda item until our next council meeting.
I'll make a motion that we table this agenda item until current council members are all present.
Okay. Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Daley to table the consideration of this agenda item until our next scheduled city council meeting. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Schei. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Well, I know that we had individuals here who were interested to see the outcome of this, and we appreciate those of you who were here, and we'd invite you to, with all due willingness, participate and patience, come again in two weeks, see how it plays out. All right, let's proceed with item number two. This is the update on stormwater drainage near Ananen Road. When we say Ananen Road, we really mean the issue that has been troubling that section of 506 adjacent to the Little Crane Restaurant, which is obviously owned by our council member. During the rainy season, it turns into a, in essence, a lake that flows underneath business. And I know that in previous conversations, I know that we've contemplated, hey, good evening, Gary Stamper, our Lewis County Commissioner, present with us.
How are you doing?
We're doing great. And so we were going to explore the option of getting a public works employee from the city of Winlock to come here with a camera and scope the pipes that we think may be blocked and impacting that drainage problem. And I can report that we've gotten finally, what was it, two or three days ago, approval from the mayor?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, from Winlock to have their employee come down and do that.
Somebody contacted me, and I don't know who it was, that I suggested that they go up this way from the old creek where it comes out. I said around five feet and dig down and see with the, don't break any pipe, but dig down and see if they can find the clay tile. I mean, that was my suggestion. So if they did, that then they could take and cut the old clay tile and use a camera to go through there to come up to the railroad tracks. That was just my suggestion to try and help them.
Well, it was a good suggestion. We heard about the conversation, and that will likely be incorporated in this project. We've allocated some funding. They're not charging an arm and a leg for their services. But do we have any updates on that since we last talked?
Yes. The only thing we're waiting on now is a little bit drier weather. The Winlock employee has asked that we wait till it's a little bit drier, it's easier on the equipment, and you can see more when there's not so much water in the pipe. Because once the, once the camera gets in the pipe, if it gets submerged, then all you can see is underwater, and you can't see what the pipe looks like around it. So he says when the rain dies down a little bit and it's a little bit drier, there's less water in there, especially if we think water is backing up and filling up the pipe till it's full.
If they actually go from the Olaqua end, it's going to be the same flow no matter what time of year it is, because no more water gets through.
He's also concerned about his equipment that's outside, that doesn't go in the pipe. His equipment setup being out in the rain, and so he doesn't have a way to keep that covered and protected. So that's the last I heard in talking with our public works employee. We're just waiting for a little bit of drier day or drier section of day, and as soon as we call him, he's going to be able to come pretty much that same day or the next day. So it'll be a pretty quick turnaround as soon as we can, everybody just pray for a break in the rain for one day, so we can get him out there.
Don't look at the news then.
To do.
There's no break in the rain.
Well, my opinion is definitely the old clay pipe.
Probably. We anticipate that we'll discover something near the entrance of the absolute germ business. So, but that's speculation. Now, was there an issue with certification to enter the manhole to access the pipe on the south side of 506?
We're still determining that.
Yeah. We can't just send somebody down inside there to run the camera without appropriate certification.
I don't know what year it was, but it's been a long time ago that when the railroad crossing was redone, they went underneath the railroad with new pipe. It's probably metal pipe. But I can't remember what year it was, but I do know it was way back when they redone the crossing.
Hey, Andy, do you remember, did they go down both sides of the road or just down one of them?
Yeah, one of them goes on this side here, pretty close to the...
North side.
Pretty close. But they dug that up when they were playing with it, here a few years ago.
We think that we will determine if there is a pipe on the south side, so with this camera.
Right, good.
Okay. Well, that's the latest. Patience, again, is requisite here. Mother Nature is kind of along the show. All right. Well, let's proceed with agenda item number three. Council, now conduct your discussion regarding the recommendation by the engineering statements, the SOQs, statements of qualifications, review team for the TIB Street Improvement Project. It involves paving of Main Street from 506 past the post office, past Worthy Park.
Paving of A Street.
A Street. Okay. And so that committee met yesterday and spent considerable time interviewing the two businesses that were selected of the five that submitted their SOQs. And I believe that we're ready to engage in that public discussion. And so we turn the time over to members of that committee to provide whatever direction and feedback. You note that we have prepared a statement, it should be in your packet, that would help perhaps guide this discussion.
I just need to fill in the blank as to which firm, because at the time, we didn't know until we had interviewed. I think just we decided that you were going to report what the decision was, so.
Well, I was, I'm prepared to do that, but it also notes that we should articulate a basis for the decision. And I would hope that we get some feedback from Mr. Wilson's edification and the members of the public. So unless the council is opposed to it, I will announce the company that was selected after we discussed it, but obviously, the council is going to officially approve it tonight. But the...
So, Andy, we interviewed two different companies to take over our...
Oh, we did?
Yeah, to take, to do the TIB A Street in front of the post office job. Us three were at the meeting, and we interviewed two companies. They were very good. But one company, we felt edged out... They were very good, um, but one company, we felt edged out the other just a little bit in the whole knowledge of the, of the, uh, of what we want, you know? The knowledge of the, uh, the job, you know, so.
Those are qualifications.
The qualifications were all, were, were great, um, they have a team ready to, uh, to, to do what we want them to do and hopefully with, with their ability, um, or their, the same company that wrote the grant for us, so that they have their head wrapped around the whole process.
Why did I give the names of the two companies? Two that were selected for interview was the KPFF Consulting, uh, uh, company out of Lacey, Washington. They sent three individuals, highly competent and articulate, knowledgeable, and gave a very compelling package that withstood the, and we asked each company the same questions. There were ten of them, and so I thought they did an outstanding job. Uh, the other company was the Jackson Civil Engineering Company, um, uh, out of.
Shugon.
Well, Shugon. And, um, it's owned by Devon Jackson. He and an associate, um, were there and, um, as Jason was indicating, they gave an outstanding, a very professional, articulate, well-prepared presentation as well. So, from my perspective, it was very difficult to decide which, because both were outstandingly qualified. But did you want to declare whether you?
Go ahead.
No, I didn't want to steal your thunder.
No, no.
Well, the decision that was reached at that point, that to recommend for council approval was Jackson Civil Engineering, owned by Devon Jackson. And so, and he happens to be present here this evening, so that's, yes, Mr. Wilson.
Well, I have to go back to the old days that Vader Tavern was still here. We had the sidewalk where it was today, we had the sidewalk over by the post office where it was today. I heard they was going to reduce the city street like this, I'm against it. I don't know why, it can't be done like it was done around nineteen seventy-nine or somewhere around that. When we had the whole A Street in front of the old tavern and everything was completely blacktopped and we put the sidewalks in. And this is why, why I was told that it was going to be fifty-five feet or something.
Uh, no.
Reduce the width of it, that, that's upsetting because.
Mr. Wilson, I don't think that's accurate. So, I, I, I don't believe that, um, it's going to be reduced to that extent. I, my understanding is that it's, there's not going to be much of a reduction in that portion of this street, of A Street past the post office. It would be reduced somewhat in the block by Warden Park, but, um, so I don't think you should be too concerned about that particular element.
Well, if it stays almost like it is, I agree that, all for it, because I'd like to see it blacktopped and redone. Dave Allen and I had planned to, that in the middle of the street, in the old days, we were going to put a ten-foot thing down the middle with lights and planters and so forth like this to make it be beautiful.
Yeah.
But that went down the tube also.
Sure. Well, I can tell you that there will be discussion regarding the specifics of it. This particular agenda item is to decide which company we're going to.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm sorry I got involved.
Well, you've heard.
Because I like the old history, I kind of have a history.
Yeah, well, yeah.
The City of Vader. Suppose you ever in the Vader Tavern?
No.
Well, that's where everything was taken care of for the city.
Tell you, when we tore up the old sidewalks, uh, people that were out there with, uh, their metal detectors, they found a lot of money that was lost by the patrons and that's.
Go down Annan, go down Annan Road right now today and you'll find people that used to go down there just less than ten years ago with metal detectors and find the money.
Well, anyway, um, so we've announced for the, uh, council's deliberation, the company that, um, I think the committee, which was appointed and approved by the council, was authorized to do. And so I would hope that there, as it articulates, we should, um, perhaps in a matter of public record, specify some basis for that choice.
I'll do that.
Would you? Okay.
Five different companies submitted, um, statements of qualification. Uh, only two companies had individualized plans for the City of Vader already, um, already written down for us, KPFF and Jackson Civil Engineering. Uh, and those were the two firms that actually came here into town and we interviewed in person. And in the end, um, Jackson Civil Engineering had the most detailed plan with, um, other, uh, firms already signed up to work on our particular project, um, with the stroke of a pen. So, um, that's a level of, uh, you know, service that, uh, that we, that we're really looking forward to having, so.
Jason, did you want to add a little reason for the selection of Jackson Civil Engineering?
I think, uh, what put it over the top was the, the seamless, uh, seamlessness from drawing up the, the, uh, the grant to knowing the, the, the project to actually getting it into motion, so.
Okay. I would echo those observations. I, I was quite impressed with the actual pre-SOQ submission of coming to the community and getting acquainted with council and, and the project. So, it was impressive, the homework that went into the SOQ. And their relationship with, um, and acquaintanceship with grant writing. That is, um, something that we hope we can enjoy and benefit from in the future as well. We, I sensed a real commitment to the community, which was extraordinary, and both were wonderful. But I, I would say those were probably the three primary things that, did you want to add?
You guys covered it pretty well.
Okay, well, then, with that, I would make, having made that as a matter of public record, I would invite some official action.
I'll make a motion. I move to select Jackson Civil Engineering as the most qualified engineering firm, respondent for the TIB-funded A Street project, and direct the mayor to negotiate a contract in return for council approval of said contract upon completion.
Okay, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Shai for council consideration. Do we have a second? I heard Mr. Wilson officially seconded that motion. But do we have any additional commentary? Hearing none, let's put it to a halt. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is officially carried and approved. And so I would round applause to Devon Jackson. We really do look forward to working with you on this project. And hopefully if you discern some probable need for responsiveness, members of the council, it could be interesting. So, with that, we'll.
I always like to bring history up to this city.
Yeah. That's right.
And I idea that was where everything, and we used to have the Vader Tavern.
Okay, well, then with that.
That was the old days.
True. We'll proceed with our last agenda item. The council to discuss options for vehicle weight limit regulations. And, um, in the course of my conversation with Mr. Parsons, who has had, I think, prime, uh, interest in that particular topic, he was hoping that the council might, um, decide to table that agenda item until he can be present to, you know, participate in it. So, that would be the only input I would have for, uh, at the outset of this council discussion. So.
I'd be, I'd be all right with that. I'd like to go through this and I'd talk to you personally about it too.
You did talk?
No, I would, I would like to, yeah. I just got this yesterday.
Well, um, but would there be a motion that would emerge from that perspective?
I'll make a motion to table the, um, discussion on vehicle weight limit regulations, item number four on the agenda until the next meeting.
Okay, heard that motion submitted by Mr. Shai. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Then, uh, any last discussion on agenda item number four? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. And with that, that will officially conclude this Vader City Council meeting, which we declare closed at six forty-two PM. With that, we thank you all for being here.